One, two, three. We have enough. So, thank you, everyone, for being here. I will just give a quick framework for this discussion. We certainly want to hear board member comments and concerns or whatever. But first, I really want to thank staff for working with us. Over the last couple of years, I believe, the Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee has taken up work, I think another committee worked on it before, and had an opportunity to work on the process of how we handle facilities and making sure that the community is appropriately engaged and with a meaningful opportunity to do so. During that time period, staff has worked to get feedback from the community. We've also incorporated numerous people from the community in our CPDC meetings. And a few of our board members have come in with their facility questions and been able to sit with the committee and also provide input. So this is the result of two years of that work. And it will hopefully provide a system or a process by which future board members will be able to maneuver this very difficult process with fidelity and allow the community to have an idea of what to expect in the process. So with that perspective, I will turn it over to our capable staff members, who I think have done a really great job. So, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara, members of the board, and Dr. Reed.
I'm sorry. I forgot to say the goal. Forgive me for interrupting. So today is your opportunity to give us some input. We'll certainly take that into account. Without objection, this will be on the consent agenda for the December 4th meeting. Yes, ma'am? So, I did not come up with the process. That is what has been suggested by our leaders. That is what we would be discussing today. Ms. Eismerheiser, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Scott. I'm the Director of Community Relations here at Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm joined with our Chief of Facility Services and Capital Programs, Janice Gomansky, and Chief of Engagement and Experience, Lisa Young-Ludhall. Sorry. Capital projects impact students, families, employees, and our community members. And effective, transparent, and communication and engagement around these projects is critical for establishing trust, strengthening relationships, and building support for the school community and our division. We recognize that there was room for improvement in how we communicate and engage with communities during capital projects. Therefore, we created a new framework for engagement. Our goal with this new approach to communication and engagement for capital projects is to establish consistency in communication and engagement for all capital projects, to improve communication and outreach, to encourage public participation in the process, and to build understanding. Our work began in summer of 2022. The Office of Communications and Community Relations and the Facilities Department conducted a joint review of the CIP and Capital Project Communication and Engagement Process with a view to ensuring increasingly robust outreach, accessibility, transparency, and accountability. That review included stakeholder listening sessions with FCPS facility staff, school board members, FCPS leadership, including regional assistant superintendents and executive principals, PTO and PTA representatives, the facilities planning advisory council, and principals who are involved with capital projects at various stages. We also reviewed past processes, including communications and engagement around capital projects from fiscal year 2017 through '21, stakeholder feedback on community engagement processes for that same time period, and boundary discussions. We do recognize there's an opportunity to expand on this and to be more inclusive of our diverse community and future reviews. But informed by this research, we then developed a standardized but adaptable framework for engagement for all capital projects. In spring of 2023, this framework was introduced with 14 schools in different phases of the project. You can see a list of those projects here. All of these projects are now under a specific communication and engagement plan that includes elements of this new framework. The key elements of our framework are the Capital Project webpage, the Capital Project mailing list, online feedback forms, community meetings, and timely and direct communication. Every capital project has a dedicated webpage that is regularly updated with the latest informations about the project. This includes upcoming opportunities to engage, links to feedback form and a mailing list, details about the project's scope, and a history of communication and engagement around that project. Every capital project also has a dedicated mailing list through FCPS's News You Choose system. Anyone can sign up for this mailing list on the project webpage or through the News You Choose site by searching under Capital Projects, School Construction, and Finding Your School. Subscribers to this mailing list will receive updates about the project direct to their inbox throughout the project timeline. These may include regular updates, notifications of community meetings or other opportunities to engage, and notifications about construction impact. Project feedback forms are open when input and feedback is sought throughout the project phases. These forms coincide with community meetings and are open for a two-week period from the date of the community meeting. The public is informed about the opportunity to share feedback through various communication methods, which we'll go into detail about in just a moment. We want to be clear that there is always a way to share feedback and ask questions about capital projects. When an online feedback form is not open, that "Give Feedback" button on the project webpage will then direct the public to a shared inbox where they can submit a question or provide feedback. We are currently in the process of transitioning that to the Let's Talk platform, which will enable us to be even more responsive. Community meetings are an essential part of the Capital Project Communication and Engagement Process. They provide families, employees, students, and our community members the opportunity to learn about the project, to ask questions, and share input. Meetings are scheduled at key points throughout each project phase, and the public will be informed about these meetings through various communication methods that, again, we'll talk about in just a moment. The public can expect community meetings to follow the same basic agenda: a presentation by FCPS staff and the project team, followed by a question-and-answer session. Topics that are included at these community meetings will include the project's scope. And in earlier meetings, this will include information about the design and highlight features of the renovation or construction project. And as we move into construction, these meetings will focus more on what people can expect as we go through construction and how we will maintain school operations. Other topics that will be discussed at our community meetings include the project's status and what's coming up next, logistical information during construction, such as parking, site circulation, and continuity of learning. And every meeting will always conclude with information about how to stay informed and be engaged. Timely and direct communication is another critical component of the Capital Project Communication and Engagement Process. Community relations working with the Office of Communication ensures that information about capital projects, community meetings, and other opportunities to give feedback are shared effectively and efficiently. The communication platforms that will be used include email, that is both the e-notify system and those subscribers to the mailing list through News You Choose, webpage updates, outreach to community organizations, local businesses, apartment complexes, and neighbors surrounding the school, and the use of print materials, including postcards and flyers, when possible. We share message drafts with principals and school board members, so they may include them in their communications if they would like. And we also reach out to the magisterial representative of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission to share information when appropriate. With all of our work around capital projects, we identify the following audiences for outreach: school families, including students, school employees, neighbors, community organizations and businesses, and county officials. Plans are in place to provide tools and support for each school to easily share capital project information with their families, students, employees, and communities as well. We establish standards for three important areas of capital project engagement. Our standard for multilingual engagement is that correspondence languages at or above 1% of the school community are considered key publics. Language interpretation and translation will be provided and targeted outreach conducted. We are looking at a number of ways to expand the availability of language interpretation and translation. For neighborhood engagement, neighbors, businesses, and community organizations, such as homeowners associations and civic organizations that are within a one-mile radius of the school are identified as key publics. Targeted outreach will be implemented to bring these stakeholders into the discussion. And event information will be shared with all key publics identified in the project within a minimum of two weeks of the event date. So if there's a community meeting coming up, you can expect to hear about it at least two weeks in advance. Two other communication and engagement plans are connected to this framework: the annual capital improvement program update, which occurs every winter, and the biannual bond referendum. Community relations and the Office of Communications partner with the Facilities Department to develop and implement strategic communication and engagement plans for all three of these areas. Linking capital projects, the CIP update, and the bond referendum helps the public have a better understanding of how school renovations and construction work. All three are components to the larger story of how FCPS builds our future. Now let's take a quick look at how this framework is applied in each phase of a capital project. A single capital project goes through four distinct phases: approval, planning and design, construction, and completion. Project approval phase begins when the school board votes to approve a project in the capital improvement program. A project may be in this phase for 10 or more years before moving on to the next phase. Public feedback during the approval phase is used to measure community interest and concern and provide preliminary input on how the project can meet needs. As you can see, there are a variety of ways the public can engage during this phase. Some are with FCPS, such as community meetings and online feedback forms, and the Design and Feedback and Engagement Committee. Other engagement opportunities occur with Fairfax County. These may include the Land Use Committee, Planning Commission, and Board of Supervisors. And in some cases, we also work with town governments. Information about all engagement opportunities will be shared with the public. The next phase is planning and design, which begins when funding for planning and design has been allocated through the school bond referendum, which goes to voters every two years. Public input and comment on a project's design will be accepted up to the two-week period following the designated meeting during this phase. Major changes at that point would cause significant cost increases and delays in project timelines. This phase is the key time for the public to provide input about the project's design. Since it is especially important to give the public ample opportunity to share input during this phase, communications will be very clear about when input can be shared and any deadlines. The construction phase begins when a capital project, when funding for the project has been allocated through the school bond referendum. Public feedback during the construction phase is used to determine the impact of construction, excuse me, on the school and community and raise awareness of any concerns. When construction begins, there can be no changes to the project design. One community meeting is held at the start of construction, so the school community is aware of what to expect. At this meeting, staff will explain the construction process and answer any questions. Public feedback is encouraged so the team can be aware of how construction is impacting students, families, employees, and the community members. As construction is a constantly evolving process, additional community meetings may be scheduled for phase transitions or to address any changes or concerns. A project is deemed complete through occupancy. This phase is one of celebration and reflection. First, we enjoy a celebration of completion at the school with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. However, we still want to know how the project impacted the community and how we can continue to improve. So there will be one final round of feedback collection. As with any construction project, there may be changes and new developments along the way to completion. For example, a shipping delay may cause the construction schedule to be revised and impact the planned construction phasing. When changes like this happen, we follow the same standards we set forth in the project phases in order to be transparent and accountable. Information about the project changes will be shared promptly through the methods we've previously discussed. When necessary, community meetings and online feedback forms will be available. Public feedback during changes is used to measure community interest and concern and indicates the level of follow-up needed. To summarize, a capital project goes through each phase from approval to completion with timely and informative communication and opportunities for feedback, engagement, and questions. For those who are interested in learning more, I encourage you to visit these three webpages. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We're going to, Ms. Darnett Kofax is going to call on you guys in the order that you raised your placards. But I do want to say just a little bit of a framework as a former planning commission. I know there may be some comments, Commissioner, there may be some comments in your documents referencing the county process. We have no control over the county process, so this document focuses on our part of it, although there is an approval process that has to happen on the county side as well. Thanks.
All right. We are going to start with Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I don't typically do this, but I do want to give some thanks for this work because I brought with me all of the documents that we've done over the last year and a half, almost. So it's an exciting labor of love to see it here. But I do want to say thank you to OCCR. You guys have been there from the very start, and it's been wonderful just to watch it finally get before the board. Similarly, to Janice, who came in and just jumped in and was so very helpful, and before her Chuck. I also want to give thanks to the FPAC members who participated in this process for the entire period. I also want to say thank you to the Fairfax City School Board, because they were also right there with us as this document was developed, because they too are impacted. Dan Ammanoff, definitely, I want to make sure that I highlight. I also want to say thank you to Julie Stranley, who's in the audience, who was a very key member who participated in just about all of the meetings as well when we were talking about this topic. And most importantly, I want to say thank you to the members of the committee: Megan McLaughlin, who is not here, and Ms. Keys-Gamara, because this could have been a nothing, but it ended up being something that was very helpful to me as a school board member, particularly as you saw that list. I participated in the Brenmore Project, the Justice Project, and the Fall Search Project, and it has been helpful. And Mr. Frisch, some of the obstacles that you and I had the missed opportunity to experience, I think could have been avoided had we had this process in place, because it is clear what the communication is. It is clear when feedback will be provided. I have been so excited over the online feedback form. So you're not limited in being present in the meeting in order to give your feedback as a community member. And there's a clear timeline as to when it's end, as to when it will end. But most importantly, there's space for there to be a response to that feedback. It doesn't just go into the ether and nobody hears about it. The other thing that I wanted to highlight that I think is a huge plus, and I think that was my time?
Just asking the clerks, was that three minutes? Two. We're going to do three. I'm sorry. Give her another minute.
Thank you.
And everyone else as well.
Is the fact that the interpretation, I've been frustrated when we have these meetings for the community and the language that goes out in the invitation is interpretation as available. We're discounting parts of our community when we put out language in that way. So I'm very glad to hear now we are super intentional in ensuring that we are allowing the entirety of our community to participate. But I do have kind of a quick set aside, because it was mentioned earlier by a couple of board members here. This document has been ready for over a month. I'm not sure why board members just recently received it, just a couple of days ago. And that's just really unfair to them because they would not have had the time to dig into this in the way that I think I have been, and of course, many of you. Can somebody share that with me? Oh, okay, last night.
So let me just jump in on that. I think there was just some misunderstanding last, the document was in process. This is what I understood. And last week, there were some minor changes that were made. I think with the holiday, et cetera, it was then sent out last night.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for that. And you know what? And all my thanks, I missed one, and I'm going to go back. Wes Nelda, is she still here? She has been such a great support in this process, so I definitely wanted to highlight that. Oh, great. Nelda, thank you so much. You have been so helpful in really taking this on and helping to shepherd us through it. So very grateful for all of the work that have gone through this. And I am very excited to hear what our colleagues have to say on this. But no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Frisch, followed by Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work. Going to dive right in on questions. For the stakeholder engagement with each project, for the homeowners, tenant associations, PTAs, et cetera, I think I heard that and read that the schools are responsible for that?
No. All of the layers of communication and outreach is coming out of our office, here at Central Office. We provide schools with everything that we're doing once they're aware of what's going out about their project. And those that would like to include it in their communications, nay. But we don't put that burden on them. Ultimately, it's up to us to make sure that information's out there.
Great. I think we could probably use some work on the Capital Project pages around search engine optimization so that things are more easily found. I know we're redoing the website, and that'll probably help in that regard. Community meetings, do you anticipate the need to go out for substantive changes for a community meeting? So if something big happens, back to the community before moving on with the project?
I think because there's not really a one-size-fits-all for what a big change can be, depending on the complexity of what it is. If it's something that is a change, but it's very easy to describe and get out there immediately over the online platform, that would be a preference, so we can get it out quickly into everyone. If there's a lot of nuance and explanation to it, I think that's when we would want to work together with OCCR to see if it makes sense to do like an in-person meeting or another avenue to make sure we can really explain the why and get through those complexities.
Thank you. I think this is one of those examples where technology is going to be a big help for us, but people are bombarded with digital communications. And the idea that they would actually see one email or two emails is difficult to accept. And I think when we talk about postcards and flyers where possible, perhaps that shouldn't be a where possible. Perhaps we should be defining, you know, exact examples of when postcards and flyers are going to happen. I get so little mail that isn't garbage mail that that stands out to me. And anybody who's involved in marketing right now knows a variety of communication styles has to be used for every kind of communication, or else you're just not going to reach the people you're after. So I'd love for us to look at that, a more focused approach on actual mailings and mailers that look in a way that somebody would actually want to read it and not just throw it in the trash. On the standards, it says one mile around a school for this type of intensive outreach. Why not the entire boundary and feeder schools were applicable?
So that's where we have kind of the standard framework that's adaptable, because if we keep it that one-mile radius as the standard, then we can also look at the situation and see, does it need to be larger? Does it need to be the entire boundary? If it is a high school or middle school, we do include the feeder schools in all of our communications. So again, we sort of have a standard that will always meet. And then with looking at each project, the community, the scope of it, then we can expand or contract that however we need to.
And when we say we include the feeder schools in the communication, you mean all of the things that go along with that, right? Not just, we've sent it to the principal, and that's the extent of our outreach?
Correct. When we do outreach, we're doing it directly to those families and employees.
And related communities?
You, related communities, do you mean like?
All the other entities and stakeholders that were discussed in the?
Yes, yes.
On the construction subject, I've now been a part of several major renovations. And I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, but principals are put, a lot is put on our principals during a renovation project when they could be the champion of engagement for the project if they had more time to focus on that as their role. I'm interested in hearing other techniques of using principals' time and perhaps having project managers who are responsible for renovations so that our principals are not forced to host a unaired HGTV, you know, extended-run series.
And I think that's where our offices can kind of come in and support and do that. And I think that's one of the good things about this plan is it puts more of the onus on the Central Office staff so that the principals aren't burdened with that. Because I agree, whether, no matter what happens, it is going to be extra work when you undergo a renovation. I mean, your school's under construction. It's just going to be that finite nature, right?
Are there ways that we can lift some of that? I'm not saying that the principal shouldn't be involved in engagement. In fact, I think that's where they probably excel best. Are there things that we can do to lean into that work instead of the actual project of the renovation work? Like, what was the process in DC, for example?
The process in DC, we actually had some staff dedicated to just the day-to-day construction and really trying to standardize what that construction was from the implementing the ad specs, implementing the design. So it kind of took away some of the burden of decision-making when it came to the design and construction. And in a way, it provided a more, again, standard global process. We also had some dedicated staff to help more is that like, more of an OCCR-type role where they would check in with the school, but more focused on the communications and the outreach piece, just to make sure that that was also being taken care of and that those principals, the leadership, felt comfortable in terms of how that communication could look if they got asked a question. Here's how they would kind of be prepped on that. So we kind of approached it from two different support sides. One was just really taking ownership of design and construction. And then the other was, again, providing that regular touch bases on the more like communications piece.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you all so much. I, there's a few things, just kind of to piggyback, I think, on what Carl was saying. I think we have tended to have the onus be on people to know, like the News You Choose is a good example of how you even know to get on the project mailing list. And to Carl's point, it typically means that the principal has got to make, you know, put it in several newsletters to say, hey, this is how you do this. So again, I don't, I certainly don't have the answer. But I agree about, I like the idea of like a small postcard or, you know, some things that might stand out to you, like, hey, this is happening in your community. Because there are places that don't have HOAs, which makes it even more difficult. We live in a subdivision that has part HOA, part not HOA. And so, you know, I think there are some opportunities along that line. What I will say is I think the expectation of what those meetings should look like is really important. I've had the opportunity to be at several of them, and they are not all created equal. You know, I think that we need to make sure that there are things like, you know, exterior site plans that are always, you know, at those meetings so that communities can see. We had a situation with a school, again, nobody was here many years ago, where- We had a situation with a school, again, nobody was here many years ago where it wound up literally touching somebody's back fence. And it was not until the post holes were dug that that was apparent. Because the site plan, they kept saying the exterior plan wasn't ready. And so the community had no opportunity then to have that engagement. And that's not the kind of engagement, you know, ultimately that you want. And the same with the design of how those meetings are run. I think, you know, probably my colleagues who have been to them, I think you all have done a much better job in recent times of really structuring what the agenda looks like, what are the opportunities for feedback? That is such a huge improvement over how those, it was kind of like, everyone sit here and here's the, here's the plans, does anybody have questions? And people were like, I don't, I don't, I don't know. So thank you so much. I know that takes work to do it and have people lead those. And a couple of questions for me. One is the engagement of the supervisors. You know, I've noticed a couple of times we've had issues. Willow Springs was one where Patriot Park, they put a huge dump of all of the dirt from the site where we were supposed to have an exterior bus loop road. And nobody knew about it. And then we got into the phase and, and all of a sudden it was like, oh yeah, well, they put the dirt there. So then when I called Supervisor Harity, he said, well, why did no one say that? Like we could have, we absolutely could have fixed that in the process. So I think just ferreting out, and it may not be for this specific document, but maybe that's a larger conversation in CPDC, you may have already had that of like, how do we make sure that somebody from the supervisor's office is engaged every step of the way? So we don't find ourselves in that exact scenario. And I do have a couple of other ones, so if we have time for it, go back, great. If not, I will send you an email.
Got her three. I'll put you on, Laura Jane. Roch, Ms. Seismar Heiser, followed by Ms. Marin.
So having received this last night at 6:30, I'm trying to flip through it. This, I will say, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this from the committees, but this is really the first I'm seeing or hearing of this. So I have a couple of questions, just preliminarily, I will say. What's the purpose of the feedback? Like what are you going to do with the feedback? Like there's several spots for feedback along the way. And I think it's, one, I think having a process is wonderful. I think having a process for transparency to the community when there's design changes and things is wonderful. But I thought I heard you say, and please correct me, that once the design is done, changes won't be made to the design. So what do you do with the feedback?
The feedback has different purposes depending on what phase it's in. In some instances, it's really to let us sort of gauge the temperature of the community to see, are there things popping up that we need to be aware of to address? Or are there, you know, kind of sentiment good, that type of thing? In some cases, it's to let us know potential design adjustments. And I'll let Janice kind of talk about how that timeline works because there is that point at which we do have to no longer collect that type of feedback or input because of the strains that it would then cause on the construction process. Do you want to?
Yeah, exactly. And that's one of the goals of this, to be very clear. You know, at this point, we've now entered the construction phase. So if you were to give us feedback on, oh, can we add 10 more classrooms? You know, that would have a major budget and timeline and resource implication. So really trying to also guide the feedback as appropriate phased. So, you know, but during design, I think that's where we wouldn't want to get feedback on the design. We have standard ed specs, we have standard master specs that allow for that equity and uniformity. But it's also really good to understand the school culture, the school operations, things that make that school an individual school that we can reconcile with those standards to make sure that it's a good project that's going to work for that particular school. So I think, again, more looking to the framework to really make sure the community understands that. That's the time where you would want to give feedback about the design because we can actually have the power to do something with that information in a way that doesn't have big cost or schedule implications.
I appreciate in terms of the project approval and the planning, design, the feedback to make sure you kind of keep the culture of the school, for lack of a better word, and the community needs. I guess where my head will go is there's feedback during the project in process, there's feedback during completion, there's feedback, are we setting up a system where, I'm taking the temperature, you said, well, what if the temperature is now I hate it? Or there's several voices, now I hate it, or now I've thought about this. What are we doing with that? Like how, like, what's? I, I think providing information along the way and transparency is super important. I think providing guidance around design because, so for example, if design feedback comes back, I want, you know, three theaters. Well, that's a cost issue, right? And so perhaps you guys would explain that in a moment. But are there guidelines around when you take the feedback to make design change and when you don't? Are there cost guidelines? Are there environmental guidelines? Are there ed spec? Like what, none of that is in here in terms of what happens with the feedback? What guides you in taking in the feedback or not? Right? Because, I mean, I'll just say from this seat, in the last four years, there's been a lot of loud voices that probably weren't the majority of voices. What got, what parameters guide your use of feedback and when and how?
I do think it's just that it's kind of during these community engagement processes, defining what that sandbox is to say, if you give me feedback, I want three theaters. Unfortunately, we are beholden to our ed specs, this provides equity, this provides continuity, et cetera, et cetera. So I agree, I think it's in more of how we roll out this plan and really being very clear on the definition of that. But say, hey, there is also opportunity to comment on the culture and what that might mean for the design, you know, be it color schemes or, you know, other things that fall within the framework that we very clearly define to the public.
I guess I would say that I think a big piece that I would love to have seen in this plan is some conversation around during each phase, what kind of information are you giving the public and what will happen with the feedback? Because I don't want to set up a false expectation in the community, right? You're, we're bringing us in, you're, we're taking our time away from families or other things we have to do to give you feedback and you did nothing with it. And that's what I kind of see in this is a potential for that. Which is not fair to you guys, right? It's not fair to your construction team, it's not fair to the, to the community and the families. So I guess I would love to see a plan that addresses in each place, what kinds of community information you will give and what the feedback, how the feedback will be used, whether it's just addressing the concerns and this is why we can't do this, or we hear you, or using it. I just don't see anything in here. I think that opens us up to a lot of potential risk. I guess with my 10 seconds left, I guess I'll ask, what is the process for this now? Since we just got this, is it on consent? Was it on new business? I just, maybe this is a conversation offline, I just am kind of curious how long we have to make any changes to this document, or is this pretty much what we got?
So I think, and I'm going to ask my meeting managers to jump in here too. I think part of what the thought process was with this document is in general, the board doesn't even vote on a public participation plan. Given the amount of time, you know, you showed your ream of paper over there, that CPDC has spent on this, which is really why, working with CPDC, we decided that we might want to bring it forward for our work session to show it to the entire board. And then, you know, we had it on for our vote. We don't necessarily need to do that. So I'll let you guys react to that as well.
No, the purpose was to just be as transparent as possible. I can say, as CPDC Chair, every time I've had an opportunity to give a report, it has been about this, right? I had an opportunity to talk to Ms. Seismar Heiser, even when she was Chair, and talk about what the committee work was. We, when we had a check-in at some point, I remember this late in the year, this was, this is what I was talking about. But I think if we can, I think some of the concerns that Ms. Seismar Heiser is raising up can be addressed by Dr. Ricardi because she went through the process. And so, did you, did you? I think they tried to answer you, and I mean, if they want to offer more, they can. I'm asking her to. Are you, that's fine, if you want to go back, but I. Are you objecting to me letting her speak?
No.
Oh, okay. So this was a live example, and that's the reason I brought up Dr. Anderson, because she went through that. So did you, did you want to share, Dr. Anderson?
I'm happy to just jump in really quickly. One of the things that I think is important to note is this document has what occurs at each stage. And I just wanted to take the Justice High School example, when we had the parking conversation. That was not in the planning, design stage because obviously the building had already been planned. It was actually right in this stage, which is three. And the, the conversation in the room was about the parking and where the community and students and staff were supposed to go. And the feedback was that it's far, it's not well-lit. Either way, that led to a change. Was it a change that cost some time and effort? Yes. Did it cost some money? Not, I think it actually saved some money on that end. But it's, I did not see with Branmore Park or with Justice High School that people came back with unreasonable asks. They were all things that more heads just, just provide a little bit more feedback from the user's perspective, how our parents and students use our school is very different than how we perceive it. And so it was not a hindrance. I think it was welcomed that we were having that kind of conversation that was frank and transparent. Because in the Justice Project, we did not have those very clear structures to start with, and it created a lot of issues. So this is at least a good next start. I'm not saying it can't be improved upon, but it really worked well with these two communities in terms of having that feedback in each of the stages. No one has been unreasonable. And I think the presentation, which is probably another good time to bring forward the next step of this work, which is to structure the presentation so that they're similar, most, they're consistent from school to school, that it's not the magisterial's members' job to help to construct something brand new. And so what I get for Branmore is different from what Elaine got for Kent Gardens. So I just wanted to share, it does work. Maybe there's some space to insert some more language in maybe these pages will be the space where we take a look at that. But it does articulate what is it that we're looking for at each stage. I have not experienced any major issues with the feedback to date.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Sure.
I have Ms. Seismar Heiser on for a go back. Next is Ms. Marin, followed by Ms. Tolan.
Okay, so I see two big things that need to be addressed when it comes to the CIP. So I'm going to start a little out of order, then I'll get to the comms input. We must update our policies before we publish a next CIP. The Governance Committee had identified no fewer than seven policies in Fall 2022 that directly feed the creation of the CIP, Architectural and Engineering Services, Building Evaluation and Renovation, Site Planning Development, Environmental Stewardship, and three more. Not to even mention the policies that feed adjacently to the CIP, such as boundary policy and the equity policy, just to name two. So the next thing I'm thinking about is what, why are we on this timeline? And looking at one of the attachments, you know, we're driving towards getting the bond on the ballot and that backtracks everything. So we've got to get this proposed and finalized so that it gets to the Board of Supervisors and is filed in June with the Circuit Court so it can be on a ballot. So if that's the timeline, how do we address the policy needs before we even work further on communicating out what is happening with the CIP process? In terms of the communications plan, I'm thrilled to see this come to fruition. And I was especially glad to spend time providing input many months ago and feedback as invited by OCCR. So I think the plan is great. I think continuing to create the websites is great. One area though, that I do have feedback on in the communications is the 10-page summary that talks about individual projects, then it switches, it switches actually to the global CIP. And those are two very different things. And the main community I see missing, as identified, is actually the school community itself. That's the students, the staff, and the families that are engaging in the school day in and day out. So, and in their minds, they're probably not as interested in the fulsome CIP, they want to know what's the process for their school. So I do think that that summary and that thinking needs to be expanded because the students, the staff, and families are not the general public. That's different. So that section on including the community and public, those are the people that live adjacent or the people who support our schools or they're concerned about something. But our student, staff, and families really need to be further cultivated in this communications plan. Even though you've got the resources like the website and the feedback form, like you've got that in place, but I think in really understanding that that's our core audience is key. One interesting conversation I had with one of our Latinx staff members was I had been explaining the bond to some students at a, at a hearing or something. And she realized that the, the understanding of the bond is very different depending on the language of the person, the native language. And so bond means something very different to Spanish-speaking cultures, I suppose. And I don't know enough about it, but like, we got to figure that out despite the bond being passed overwhelmingly. So again, just to summarize, we must update our policies before we even wholeheartedly start reviewing a draft CIP, which is on the schedule for next month. I'd love to hear my colleagues' thoughts about that if they can put that in 10 seconds in their comments.
Do you have any comments, staff, on how you are, how this plan can reach the students, staff, and parents, based upon Ms. Marin's questions?
Yeah, so just to clarify, when you mentioned that, you mentioned that CIP update doesn't reach students, staff, and parents?
So let me pull up, so this 10-page document on the engagement process for capital projects. So when I look at that, it starts with an overview, you know, that goes through it. And then you identify informing the public on page two and all the ways you do that. And then you have engaging the public. But nowhere is it defined that any of those audiences are the school community itself. I see neighbors, businesses, community orgs. We go down to collaborate, you've got the school board, supervisors, planning commission. Even on the, the page five, you know, outlook, it, when does, when does this process focus on including the people who are working and living in this school?
Thank you, Ms. Marin.
So it always starts with that outreach? I mean, it's always going to start with families, students, and employees of the school and then kind of go out from there. So the first few pages are just sort of the broad overview. And then as you get into each phase, on page six is where we start talking about the phases. You can see under what's your role, the very first grouping there is families, students, staff, community members, and neighbors. And that's that targeted outreach for that school community.
Thank you for explaining that. If you want to go back, Ms. Marin, I'll put you on there. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Omech.
Thank you. I was, you know, you went through the whole presentation, but I, having gone through some of these different projects, I, I fully understand that this is a much greater availability for public participation in our capital projects than what we've had in the past. Can you maybe just summarize just a couple of quick bullets? Like what, what pieces of this really are the biggest increase? I know the webs, the webpages, for example. Numbers of meetings, like, you know, if you could just summarize in a couple of sentences, what's the big impact of this?
Yeah, I think the big impact is that you're going to see much more directed attention for all of these projects. Where in the past, you know, and I came into this, when we started this in 2022, fairly new, and Janice is just now stepping into this. So when we say in the past, it is the past for us. But I think there wasn't this close of collaboration between our two teams. And that's made a tremendous difference because, you know, we're more aware of their timelines so we can provide that support. They're more of aware of how we can help them through that. So you're seeing more of that attention given to each project. The webpages obviously are very new. The outreach from Central Office, as opposed to relying on the schools to do that work, is new and hopefully welcome from our schools and everyone else. And again, that provides that consistency. And we know we're reaching those families and employees through our systems. The notification about community meetings, I think, will be tremendously helpful because we do now have a standard, again, of that two-week notice. And then we do a reminder the day of on those meetings. So we, you know, we build in those kind of checkpoints to make sure people are aware and can attend. And then if they cannot, we make sure they understand how they can learn more, provide feedback and that type of thing. So I think the biggest difference really is, you know, a lot more attention being given and care.
And I'll even make a second plug for the website, just understanding that if we haven't had one, what a if we haven't had one, what a huge impact that made in my last job in DC. It just allows for community members, any given day, time of the year, to get the latest and greatest information. I mean, you can look at it, if you have a busy schedule and can't attend a community meeting, you can at least always be informed. And then having even the feedback opportunity on it at all times. Again, we know not every project's going to run at the same course, but it just always provides that uniformity in being able to inform folks.
You know, thank you, I appreciate that. And, and I know, you know, I've been engaged in now two boundary change processes. And I know this is really about capital projects, but I would say that the collaboration between OCCR and facilities, there's, you know, a lot more happening. I really appreciate it as we're working on our McLean Elementary Schools versus even our high school project that we did a few years ago. So that webpage is kept up to date with information, et cetera. Super, super helpful. Can you talk a little bit about working with county offices and, and how that process works as you've outlined here?
So in terms of the communication and engagement, what we do is when we get ready to put out information about a community meeting, we send a message to those individuals, so whatever that magisterial representative is, just to say, hey, I just want to let you know, we're getting ready to share this with this community. Wanted to give you a heads up, here's the information, you're welcome to use it and share with your constituents if you'd like. And then making sure they know they can contact us if they have any questions or comments. Sometimes they will engage back and say they would like to attend. Sometimes they'll say, yep, we'll share it in our newsletter. Just varies. But mostly from our end, it's about keeping them informed and giving them the opportunity to be there or to share if they so choose.
Could you also talk about, and I think this gets a little bit to what Ms. Sizemore Heiser was talking about too. You know, we've seen situations where changes have been made at kind of far down into the process, and there have been major costs associated with that. How do you see this process really avoiding that situation? I know you talked about phase two, like, that's where the decisions have to be made. You know, how are we really getting that information to the public so that they know this is it?
I think the biggest thing is being very clear about that and speaking very plainly and saying, you know, during this meeting, during this timeframe, this is when your input can really have a difference on this project. And then clarifying what that difference is, to Janice's point about what type of things we could do with that. So making sure that's very clear, sharing it out in multiple ways so that people know about it and multiple times. And then being clear as we wrap that up, you know, we're done with this phase, here's your next opportunity to engage, and here's what that means for you. You know, what your input could be or how that could be incorporated into the project or not. So again, being very clear and direct.
Okay. All right, thank you. This other comment I might make, and I'll kind of leave it to the meeting managers with this. The, this is a public participation plan, as we mentioned earlier, so it doesn't really require a board vote. So we can, I guess, determine here how we want to move forward with this. If we want to allow some time for some of these changes to be made, or look at this as a living document, you know, I'll kind of leave that to you.
Well, I'll give my comments when it's my turn to speak. But yeah, I just think this is their process, right? But we had an opportunity to give some feedback and open, open the process up to a number of voices, which I really appreciate. But I'll speak to that at my turn.
I'll do the same. And next, we, we have you 56. Do you want, do you want us to speak to that right now? Okay, so, well, but you still have a turn, and I think she asked, so I'll just go. And then if you, do you want to wait? I, I'm hearing, as a meeting manager, and I sit on CPDC right now, and I know how hard everybody has worked on this. However, I'm hearing concerns from my colleagues that this is a great start, but there may be some room for improvement. And because it's not something we necessarily have to vote on, I would think that this could be something that we use right now but is ever evolving. So that's where I'm sitting right now. And that might make some of my colleagues more comfortable. And because it hasn't been a typically voted-on process, but I am very happy to see where we are right now. I have seen some projects that have been very difficult and meandering and without the public communication coming in, without an understanding of how this needs to be taken into account and when, and when the public doesn't feel heard, however you define the public, from the school community all the way to somebody who, whose grandchildren have graduated, you know, those kinds of things. So that's where I'm headed right now. And I would ask my colleagues who want go-bags to comment on that. And Ms. Tolan, you have 56 seconds. I'd love to hear from you. But I think first, let's, Ms. Kiesgmar, who's been involved in this as well, for a greater length of time than myself.
I, I don't, I don't have, this is, this is their process. We had the luxury of being able to provide input and learn as we grow and assist board members as we went along. So this, irrespective of what we say today, this is their process. And I'm personally grateful for having had that opportunity. And I think it's benefited a lot of people. So I think it is a living document. We want it to be more intentional and, and give people an opportunity to speak. It's unfortunate that the document was posted last night. It was, I had no reason to believe that that would be the case, and certainly lots of things happened, but that wasn't the intent of the committee. So I, I just think we continue this conversation and let people get their, their input and feel as though they've been a part of the process, and, and we keep moving.
Great, so we are in agreement. Thank you. Ms. Tolan, would you like to finish?
Yeah, thanks. So I mean, I think I'm in agreement with that, too. You know, Dr. Reed and I have talked a little bit, even leading up to the meeting, that, you know, it really is an operational process. And I think this kind of goes even with our earlier conversation, and we've got our strategic plan that we're working on. You know, is the public participation process around capital projects, you know, operating the way it should be? That really falls under, you know, one of our goals on, you know, safe facilities and operational facilities. So that is something where perhaps comments could be, you know, gotten over the next months as we move forward with that process. And as we continue having more and more of our capital projects move forward, we will continually improve this process. So I, I think that makes sense, you know, if the board is comfortable with that.
All right. What we'll do is after go-backs, we'll just maybe do a consensus head nod type of thing.
Is that your opportunity to speak?
Yes, but we still have one board member, Ms. Omech.
Yeah, thank you. I guess just level setting I'm trying to do even for myself. Let me start by, I guess, thanking CPDC members, Ms. Kiesgmar, Ms. Darnakofax, Dr. Anderson. And then I know FPAC and the city also have members on there. My recollection is this started, yeah, again, over a year ago. And then there was a conversation, actually, about Justice High School and what was going on there. The planning commission had their concerns about some pieces of that. And I think it was born at that point. We were like, okay, what even is our facilities process? A communication part of that? So, and there, there were some things outlined out there, but it was inconsistent, and it depended on the type of project. And then CPDC took this on to say, hey, we have no process, so let's come up with something. So I'm grateful that there's been all this investment of effort and thought to get us here. Perhaps, you know, we can start, if folks are not exactly on the same page about what it is, at the very least say, not, you know, acknowledging that now we have one, and that in of itself is worth celebrating. And then potentially, I don't know if we want to direct the superintendent to further work on this or whatever, wherever we end up landing, I think that is worth naming itself. I was especially pleased to see the components on engagement standards and expectations. I think in making sure we're representative of the various subsets of our community. I did see a component about the school community specifically, but no doubt that can be substantiated further. You know, the multilingual engagement, the neighborhood engagement, the event notification piece, I thought those were school-specific to the most part. Anyways, so another piece of this that I'm wondering maybe could help here is, when I look at the chart, and I assume this is going to be a visual that will be useful to people beyond even our board, I see the key time for public input being put between phases two and three. But then when I look to the more fleshed-out plan, there are actually community input pieces in phase one, phase two, in advance of that. And I notice, you know, for each of those charts, there is kind of an articulated function for that public input, right? So here, public feedback during the approval phase is used to measure community interest and concerns, et cetera, et cetera. Then you have the next one, it's specifically for design, which will be, which will be accepted up to two weeks before. And the next one, you know, to determine impact of construction. So that, I think elevating that might be helpful and being very specific. This visual might be a little misleading in not, you know, acknowledging that. So I don't know if that means having like a red piece on top of each component to just say like, input for blank, right? That way, because I think that also sets the community's expectations. Like, when we're right about to start and it's all been approved and paid for, or like the money's there, we're not about to decide not to do this, right? That's, we're past that point. So I think that could be helpful visually. And then finally, maybe consideration to, even before the approval part, like, when the community comes to say, hey, we have concerns about this happening altogether, or here are the ways that we think this should be designed before the approval even happens. I don't know that this creates a chance for people to voice that, because they're already coming in after the approval, right? Unless I'm misunderstanding the timeline. So I just wanted to be thoughtful about that, if we do go the route of like rethinking some of this. But again, want to honor the fact that this was made altogether.
Any comments?
No, we definitely can, excuse me, take some of that feedback on the chart and incorporate it. That was not a professionally-designed chart, so please don't think that our graphics team did that. That was a Christie-designed chart. So we can improve upon that with your feedback. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kiesgmar.
Okay, thank you. I'm actually happy to follow Ms. Omech, because those are exactly the kind of questions we were asking in the committee meetings. And how to make it as clear as possible so that anybody looking at any point, whether it was the website or whether it was, whatever it was, it pointed to a clear process. We actually started here because what we were hearing from the community, and as an at-large member, I was a part of that, was a differing process depending on who the school board member was, or what dynamics you had within your district. And it was stressful to a lot of board members. So we really started out on this process trying to address the concerns that we were hearing, not only from the county, but from board members that were really caught up in a process where there was no real guidance. So I'm particularly grateful to our staff members that are here that have built a collaboration between facilities and our communications department. And the input we were able to get from our FPAC members, at one point Ms. Tolan took the questions we had regarding this and the whole process to them so that they could give us feedback. I mean, it, it really, you guys have done a great job. I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen, because you, you know, this is, this is your baby. You are the experts in this field. I don't claim to have that kind of background. I've had an opportunity to work with the planning process a little bit. But the more the community can understand the process, the better. And that really was the focus. It's complicated, I believe, because it's not just us. When we do these things, we not only have to reach out, as Ms. Maron has said, and, and just for, to address some of the things that you raised, Ms. Maron, we, these conversations always started with the school community, with the students. And perhaps that's something that can be greater emphasized. But the outreach of all the possible impact was, you know, certainly discussed, but the starting point was always the schools, the school community, parents, students, et cetera. So I personally am, am grateful. We definitely needed fidelity. I, I agree with the actual mailings, the more, the more actual touches we can get in the community, I certainly support that. Let's see, the feedback, as Ms. Omech pointed out, it is defined in the process, perhaps. I don't know what ways we can do to get some impact feedback to make sure that that's more available or more front and center. Lots of work on the website to try to make sure that that feedback forum is there and people understand that they can participate. The thing that I do want to emphasize and that I have learned through this is there's no real, there's no one-size-fits-all. I should put my glasses on, I see you leaning forward, but I can't read your face. There we go. And so this was an attempt to set up a process that could cover all of these various possibilities. So I think you guys can continue to get input, but there, I think, I just want to make it clear, this is the process they're using, right? And so this was our opportunity to, to give some input to try to make sure we were really allowing constituents to participate. My time is up.
Okay. I want to huddle with my meeting manager for a second.
Okay.
So we have about four to five go-backs. We're going to do one minute, even though I said we were going to do two, because we're a little behind time. But the go-backs, if you can, as, as we spoke with to Ms. Tolan's comments, we think that at this point, this is a much-improved document. We thank you for your input. It is not one, I think, that everyone is comfortable on voting on right now. So in order to allow this to move forward, the best way to do that would be for us to continue to use this, this new improved process, for us to realize it's a living document, and for board members to, whether you're leaving the board, please get your information to the staff as soon as possible. And if you're staying on the board, this will be the opportunity to continue improvement. And, and so, what did you say?
It's a lot of feedback.
It, it is, and I know, but you will have four more years to do that, my friend. So, all right. With that said, I have Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Cohen. Do you need to go back? No? No? Then we'll start with you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
All right, so really quickly, first, I want to make it clear, the reason I'm pushing back a little bit is not because I don't appreciate the hard work of the committee or the work that the committee's done over the years. It's just if I'm going to vote on something, I want to make sure I have time to look at it and read it and vet it, and I think I owe that to my constituents. So I think I want to make it clear, this is not about the committee. And while we've been getting updates that the committee is working on this, we, this is the first we've ever seen what the plan is. So I think it's really important to make that clear. Because I think there's some confusion as to what the pushback is about. If this is an engagement plan, a staff plan, that's a, an operational plan that you're just looking for feedback, then, and we're not voting, then I'm more comfortable with that, because I'm not putting my sort of, I'm okay with this, behind that. So I want to make that clear. Having said that, I do think it is vital for you all, you know, Ms. Omech and I were sideboring here, maybe on this chart, maybe in here, to say, this is what the feedback will be used for. For example, phase one and phase two, the feedback we use to maybe do design adjustments, right? As, depending on the cost. Later phases, once construction started, feedback might be done to mitigate community impact of the construction that we didn't realize was going to happen. And phase four, project completion, feedback is used to improve future processes. I think that it makes it clear to the public, I have a chance to give feedback along the way, but I'm not going to be disappointed because I wanted to change what we're doing now, and it's too late to do that.
and it's too late to do that. I think that little tweak would have really, I think, helped address some of the concerns. So I know my minute is up, but I really feel very uncomfortable with this plan without setting those level-setting expectations for the community, because otherwise, we're going to have community members, I think, saying, I gave feedback and nothing happened.
No, and I appreciate all that you said, and I hope you understand where we're coming from, trying to reach this compromise here today. So any other go-bags? I don't have anybody else on the list. No? Okay. All right. Then we thank you for...
Hold on a second.
Go ahead.
If we don't have anybody else with go-bags, did you want to let Ms.?
Okay. Please, please do that. Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. We'll definitely work on the wording of that and be very clear. And I think it's also important to note that all that will be communicated out throughout the process, too. So it, it's a little difficult to be that specific in a chart, you know, and make it readable. But then as you go through the process, as some of your colleagues have mentioned, that'll be included in there. So it will be very clear.
Yeah, I think whatever you put on the website, I think it's very important that that's clear on the website, because people may not be, I think, I find sometimes as an at-large member, we kind of presume that people are hearing what's said in the community meetings, and not everybody's in the community meeting. Some may just go to the website and fill out the online form. So I think it needs to be really clear in all the spaces that we're communicating with folks, because I could just see you all dealing with an angry community that you don't need to be dealing with, and all you're trying to do is give information and be transparent and collaborative, right? And so I think that's important. And I do think it's also important for you all to put some parameters around what will drive change. Because the other thing I don't want to have happen is, 30 people at a community meeting want X, and 20 people on an online forum want Y, and you guys make a decision that we'll do X, not Y, right? Obviously, each project is different, but having some parameters and consistency in what you look at and when you take feedback will just protect you and the system from, again, that community angst. And I think those pieces, as you communicate out, need to be thought about.
Yeah. I mean, I, we agree with the comments. We do really value the community engagement process, and to be able to really refine what that looks like, so it's a way that's helpful for us and can use it. And then, too, balancing that with not wanting to falsely engage the public, too. So, yeah, I think we'll definitely take those comments back and look at them.
Thank you. Janice, how do you say your last name again?
Samansky.
Samansky. So for the public that's listening, Ms. Samansky has been here how long now?
Two and a half, three months.
Two and a half, three months. So we appreciate you and putting you in a hot seat today with a new process. And I'm sure from your previous experience, you'll have ways to continuously improve this. And thank you, Scott, as well. Really appreciate you and all your time. And my colleague, Ms. Kizgamar, who shepherded this through from a year, two, two years for a while. So thank you. And with that, I believe this work session is complete. And we need, do we need to make a motion to go into close? Do we have that language?